By the way, I've even shortened it more.
All right, that's the pledge, and then we went ahead and made us to get for your makerspace.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I watched, yeah, and then I keep them up here.
If they're gonna be a part of your...
They're not.
They're not?
But I saw, I think on the last board meeting, I was watching the video, it looks like they kept those pledge folks and the other folks together, so that we take a picture all together?
You can, if you want them to have, either have a seat, because nobody's sitting up here, they can just sit down here, and then bring your makerspace people up.
Faster, right?
Yeah, and we'll take a picture all together.
Okay, that's what I'll do.
Okay.
Out of consideration to all you folks.
That's all right.
Work money, I know, two days, no, three days around. Oh, yeah, there's a different.
I did, but it took...
Different.
That was a low ball. So I rebounded.
Oh.
But some of it's, um, is the title one. So just check our numbers before we go ahead, all right? Stop it.
We will adjourn the Board of Education closed session and reconvene the Board of Education open session at 7:06. Before we do our pledge, we're going to be opening our meeting in honor of Bailey Jo Farino, the granddaughter of Fiscal Services Director David Conway, and welcome her to the MUSD family. Bailey was born Sunday, February the 16th, at 8:35 a.m. at Arcadia Methodist Hospital. She came in at seven pounds, four ounces, 20 inches long, and beautiful, and David's third grandchild. It's the first child of Gina Conway and Ray Farino, who met at Monrovia High School and are both proud MHS graduates.
Oh, my goodness.
Oh, we have more than, I'm sorry, I was all enamored on the pictures, I'm, hi, man, these grandkids, these are cool. Next, we'd like to welcome, I'm sorry, Alina Rebecca Scott, daughter of MUSD Occupational Therapist Kimberly Waters. Alina was born on February 24th at 12:01 p.m. Fantastic. I didn't get to see the pictures of the first one, I thought, oh, there she is, gorgeous, okay. Up next, we're going to be doing the Pledge of Allegiance, and Dr. Gero is here to introduce some of his outstanding students.
Good evening, Board of Education, District Administration, and Monrovia Community. It is truly an honor to serve as a principal at Plymouth Elementary School. I'd like to bring up two of our outstanding young Renaissance leaders to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, Emma Salinas and Travis Elagato.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Face the flag and put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Travis and Emma. Last month, at the January 22nd board meeting, I announced the exciting opening of our makerspace, and I'd like to share just a 90-second video clip of some of our TK students in action in our makerspace.
Look, it's gonna change colors.
Look, it's gonna change colors. It might work. Let's go see. It's working, yes. He did the zigzag. Yes, awesome, let's see if it's gonna change the color. It changed to blue. That was gonna go to red. Let's see if it's gonna turn green. You did it.
Wow, who got that one?
Brown, brown did it. Awesome, high five. Bill's something using only red Lego. That's your challenge.
Listen, what y'all said, this one.
This one says, build Lego pattern using different colors.
What you don't see is how much work went into this, and so I wanted to take the opportunity tonight to recognize four Plymouth parents whose vision, determination, and tireless efforts made this amazing new program a reality for our students. And it all started, I think, over a year and a half ago with a conversation with Natalie Ridley, who's here. If you come on up. And she's continued to be instrumental, and also Desiree Harbaugh. Janine Powell-Brown. All right. And I'm not sure if he's here, but Dr. Howard Lee has also played a big role in our Makerspace.
Good job, buddy. Thank you so much.
Dr. Drew, I just wanted to comment on the video really quickly. What I noticed is, everybody was positive, everybody was having fun, and everybody was learning, and it was so great to hear all of those kids, whoa, and then they're talking about the colors, and how it's going, and they're really engaged, and really exciting, excited, and that's just something really positive.
That's been amazing to see it come to fruition. We've had a vision, but you never know until you actually see the kids there, and we've tried different activities, but it's been so heartwarming to see the kids and their reactions.
Well, thank you for the video, so that we get to see that exciting stuff going on, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you on Friday. Prior to this meeting, the Board met in closed session, discussed the items that were listed in closed session, and we took no reportable action. Next up is Order of Business, and entertain a motion, please.
President Hammond, we will be changing the Order of Business in that we will be moving Consent Item 15, Ares Web Professional Development, to become the first action item in I, to precede Business Services Resolution.
Okay, with that notation, are there any other changes?
There are none.
Entertain a motion?
So move, in a second.
Motion in a second, is there any discussion? Maybe please have a roll.
Board Member Gilliland?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board President Hammond?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Up next, we have some recognitions, and there's, before Mr. Spicer comes up, I just want to maybe embarrass him just a little bit. A week ago, Dr. Jackson and I went to Sacramento to experience Youth in Government, that's put on by the YMCA, and we have some really great participants that were taking key positions up in the government. And what Youth in Government is, is a student-led state government, from the governor all the way through every possible office that you would have working in Sacramento. Mr. Tyler was working in the governor's office in the cabinet. A very prestigious position to have in Youth in Government. I wanted to congratulate you on that. Watching you work the halls of Sacramento was nothing short of magic to see, and I would say that when you see the youth learning how our democracy works, it leaves you with such a feeling that know that when we're gone, the next generation will be there filling these seats and playing in those roles and doing what it is that we do to further our democracy. And I just wanted to thank you for participating in that, it's fantastic. And we're gonna meet Tyler here in just a second. We'd like to recognize and congratulate Monrovia High School students Emily Neal and Tyler Spicer on being accepted into the 41st Assembly District Young Legislators Program, and I see Mr. McGinnis out there in the audience, who will be making a much better introduction than me.
Good evening, President Hammond, members of the Board, Dr. Throsen, Cabinet, community members. Yes, you stole some of my introduction, but you did it beautifully. It is an honor and privilege to introduce to you two amazing high school seniors at Monrovia High School who are members of the 41st Assembly District with Assembly Member Chris Holden's office. They're the young, they're our representatives of our school and our community in a program called the Young Legislators Program. They sought this out on their own, they applied, it's a rigorous application process, interviews, applications, they had to submit their credentials, their grades, and their interests, and were selected among a handful of other participants. I'll show you here, it's a small, elite group of students that represent their voice and have an opportunity to learn the process of government. They meet on Saturdays throughout the year, they take field trips, they are all over the 41st district area, learning from professionals, learning from legislators, learning from elected officials, how to interact, how to conceptualize their ideas in that context. And they're, in the end of the year, they'll be taking a field trip up to Sacramento and spending some more time at the Capitol Building, doing just that, working the hallways, shaking some hands, and learning the whole process to be our future leaders. So it's an honor to see them extend their learning outside of our campus hallways in that of our state Capitol. And it's a privilege to introduce Ms. Emily Neal and Mr. Tyler Spicer.
And this is a big one. It is, every year, we send the person who is really, really talented and important in our district, and they put the nomination up for the Teacher of the Year. And there are a lot of really good teachers in California, and so the people that you are standing next to as honorees from their area are top drawer. So when you are able to stand at the top of the podium of those people who were chosen to be the top in their areas, it is quite an honor. And it's a huge honor for our district to have a person who stands on that center podium. And we have a gentleman here who is the California State Educator of the Year, and he teaches at Canyon High School, which is our continuation school. And every day that Mr. Ross goes to school to impart his wisdom, and his knowledge, and his life skills to those students, he is reaching people who some people think are not reachable. And he's never had a "I can't do that" day in my life at that school. And a tremendous person who I have nothing but loads of respect for. And the job that you do with students who some people think are unteachable. And you deserve this honor of being the California State Educator of the Year because, quite frankly, you do it every day of your life. And Mr. Furtig is here, who can speak about Mr. Ross with glowing adjectives.
Thank you, thank you so much, Board President Hammond and Vice President Wong, Board members. We are honored to be here today on behalf of Mr. Ross, and what you said is absolutely accurate about every single bit of it. When we first knew that we were gonna be nominating somebody from this district, we kind of put our heads together, talked to Dr. Kaiser, Dr. Jackson, looked at somebody we thought would be a good nominee from our school. A continuation school doesn't usually get the recognition for the staff members who, to where they get to go further. So when we nominated Mr. Ross, I kind of had a hunch this was gonna break the cycle. He is that type of educator, he comes with that type of resume. I once had a principal of a very successful school tell me that the secret to his success was that he hired people who were fun and enjoyed being there. He said, "In miracle of miracles, the kids enjoyed the fun people as well, and enjoyed being around them, and came to school and engaged." There is nobody around these parts that's more fun, more engaged, and a more positive role model for our students than Mr. Tadiz Ross. When he came to our school, immediately, it was, "What can I do?" He always says, "Just show me the hill, I'll take the hill." He always says that, and he has a military background, and he has a background that allows him to relate to just about everyone on the planet. He has been to places and done things that allows him to understand and really relate and help these kids. I remember the first contest, about '65, I believe, it felt like, that night, and I didn't get to go to, that was in Thousand Oaks. I didn't get to go to Monterey, but I understand there was just that many again, and sure enough, Mr. Ross rose to the top, and we're very proud here at Canyon Oaks, the Monrovia Unified School District, that he represents all of us, and he makes sure to represent all of us and this community that he so fiercely passionately loves. He's one of us, he's a Monrobian, and he loves our kids, and will do anything for them. So, Mr. Ross, the teacher, State Teacher of the Year, California Educator of the Year of the California League of Schools.
Um, I just want to say thank you, thank you to the Board members, thank you to Dr. Kaiser, we know Dr. Throsen, Ms. Fundukian, you know, she helped me, she set me on the right path when I went to Diamond Bar. And, you know what, we have a lot of metrics that we have to try to get these students to understand and grasp, correct? We have metrics of arithmetic and reading, but I love MCAS and Canyon because we try to make them grasp and be better humans. Because everything else, it doesn't matter. You can make skilled sociopaths, but we have to make their humanity their number one priority. And Mr. Furtig, he just, he blesses me every day, I love my school, I love my school district, I have, I am responsible for a lot of the money that comes to the school because I have a lot of children at every school. And I love this school, I love the school district, and I love my job, I love, I love Mr. Medina, sometimes. But I am just a representation of all the educators that are at MCAS and at Canyon, and what we do for the children that is above and beyond. So I'm not even, like I said, I'm not even the best educator in either one of the schools that I, by far. I'm just a representation of them, I'm just taller than them. So, that's it, so thank you guys so much, thank you so much, Dr. Throsen, Dr. Jackson, Dr. Kaiser, I have to give her a hug. And this is just for, this is our school district, this is our school district, that's it, that's it. And I believe that we're top-notch, so it's not me, it's us, yeah.
No, you said.
And so, a few of us were there, President Rob Hammond and member Ed Gilliland and myself, we were able to send off, along with Dr. Therosian and a few others. It, it was very exciting to see all the parents, you know, excited but nervous at the same time, all the kids and everything. We had the band out from Clifton and really sent them off on their way. And we were able to grab a couple pictures, so they have arrived in Barcelona safely and already having a good time out there. That is student Ryan Gould having a good time with pigeons there. So, we know, the competition starts tomorrow, and we know they're going to do great. So, look out for their Instagram account because they are posting their pictures there and status. I, I have one other item. Okay. On a serious note, yesterday, we learned the California State Lottery was audited, and the results released a scathing report alleging that the agency short-changed schools sixty-nine million dollars in profits over the last four years and recommended that most of the money be repaid. The LA Times story stated, "The lottery has not followed state law, which requires it to increase its funding for education in proportion to its increases in net revenue." The audit released Tuesday said California schools have suffered as a result of problematic management and contracting at the lottery agency. It is infuriating to read stories like this, knowing how hard our board, our superintendent and cabinet work and are forced to make difficult decisions day in and day out to keep our budget and district solvent. California needs to get serious about funding issues, funding issues districts facing, and this just adds insult to injury. I urge you to contact your state lawmakers and encourage them to ensure the money is paid out expeditiously and with back interest. I don't know what the breakdown will be and what Monrovia Unified's share will be, but in these times, anything helps. The point is, the lottery was created for education, yet the districts are not receiving the full benefit they should based on the law. Thank you.
Thank you. When Mrs. Travanti first got onto the board, she has made the entire district and the community aware of the dangers of vaping. Part of that is we were successful in securing a grant, and since I believe it's never too early to put something on your calendar that's important to attend, on Tuesday, April the twenty-eighth, at six PM at Clifton Middle School, there is going to be a See Through the Smoke Parent Education Night about vaping. I'd like to thank Maritza for keeping this very important news at the forefront of not only the board, but to the city as well. And later on in the evening, there's an item on the agenda that will codify our belief in how important that is if, if this thing passes. I wanted to thank you for that, and I wanted to get it on people's calendars now to please attend. There is a lot of information that parent, I think parents will find very, very useful with, about, with and about vaping. And it will be in multiple languages so that if, that will help you to understand what is going on. Very important. Next, we have Ashley from Canyon to tell us about all the good things that are happening on your campus.
Good evening, President Hammond, members of the board, Dr. Therosian, members of cabinet, friends and families of the Monrovia community. On behalf of Canyon Oaks High School and Mountain Park School, I would like to share a brief report about our schools. Our juniors are working hard with Mr. Edwards and Mr. Holman to prepare for the state, state testing this spring. Mr. Chacon and his team began their soccer season last week against Mount Olive. Missed of, is preparing our softball team for the season that is just around the corner. We have a busy month of March lined up for our students. We have accepted a special invitation to a job fair on March eleventh, in which all our students will have the opportunity to participate. We have also been invited to, to take a tour of the CBS students and to be the live audience to the show, The Last Man Standing, starring Tim Allen. Thank you again for all your support for our schools.
Dr. Therosian.
Thank you, President Hammond, members of the board. I would like to take an opportunity to thank Monrovia Reads for all that they do for our students, from our Canyon Early Learning Center throughout the district to most of our adults. This Thursday, we will have, next Thursday, not tomorrow, on March fifth, we'll have Read Across Monrovia, and in the evening fundraiser for their very worthwhile activities. So, just a, a thank you to them for all that they do. Also, I'd like to take just a moment to thank the Monrovia Droidy Black Alumni Association for partnering with us, with their efforts in the annual art show. We, every board member was present and enjoyed the artwork of our students, thanks to the talents of, of their teacher guiding them. And across the room, what you see is our, our first, second, and third place students and winners. We asked if we might borrow these for a little bit, and I do think that they enrich this room and better represent what it is we do and why we do it. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Up next is public comment. The board encourages public participation, invites you to share your views on school business. First, we'll have comments for items that are not on the agenda. Simply fill out a speaker card, and you shall be heard. Ms. Huff, do we have any speakers?
Yes, Board President Hammond, I'd like to invite Eve Terrell to the podium.
Hello. Um, we are from the Monrovia High School Drama Department. My name is Emily Kraus, and I am the defensive captain of the Theater Arts Conservatory.
And I'm Eve Terrell. I'm a senior in the, at Monrovia High School and Drama Department, and... Oh, my bad. Sorry.
I'm Karina Campos. I'm a junior at the Monrovia Arts Program, and I am the stage manager for the show this year that we are talking about.
And she also created the artwork on all the posters that I'm sure you've seen around town.
Yes. And speaking of the posters, in case you're wondering, we are not hosting a spelling bee. This is a musical. It's just called the Twenty-Fifth Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee. Um, I know, big disappointment. I was, I was sad too when I heard the news. Um, yeah, but unlike me who cannot spell at all, um, the kids in the show are so determined and so excited about spelling that they would do anything to take the prize of champion. So, please join us for a super fun night with the Twenty-Fifth Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee.
And the dates are March twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and twenty-eighth, Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Yes, we also...
At eight o'clock. Wait, seven o'clock.
Seven, I think.
Seven o'clock.
We also have tickets for all of the board members.
Yes. In case you'll pass them out.
Yes. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
I have seen the posters all around town, and I'm very excited.
Thank you.
So glad you got over your stage fright.
Do we have any other speaker cards? Anyone else wishing to speak to the board on any item that is not on the agenda? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that portion, and we'll take up the matter of public comments for items on the agenda. Simply fill out a speaker card, and you shall be heard. Ms. Huff, do we have any speakers?
There are none.
Anyone's wishing to speak to the board on any item that is on the agenda? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that portion, and we'll move on to the consent With the notation that we made earlier, is there any other items to...
Kathy?
Oh, yes, we did.
We did.
Well, hang on, I'll go back. Yeah, that was E two? Yes. Okay. Up next is consent. With the notation that we have the one item that's moved from its position to an action item, any other changes? Don't see any, so I'll take up a...
Motion.
Motion on consent.
Oh, so moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Is any discussion? May we please have a roll call?
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Gilliland?
Yes.
Board President Hammond?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. Now, we will take up that item that we moved. Item fifteen, technology, and Dr. Kaiser.
Yes, thank you, Board President Hammond, board, and Dr. Therosian, and cabinet members, community. Tonight, we are, the Board of Education has requested to approve Professional Development Services provided by Ares during the Monrovia Common Day of Learning, which is coming up on March sixth. This training will be delivered to elementary teachers, and the rationale for this training is that elementary teachers have expressed interest in learning to use the Ares Gradebook component of Ares to assist in tracking grades and the transfer of grades from the electronic gradebook to the elementary report card, which contains more than thirty different grades that teachers need to transfer. The elementary report card contains these areas, and this product will automatically switches the grades from the grades to the report card, eliminating some clerical work for our teachers. The system was upgraded to Ares Web a few years ago through our Technology Department, and Ares Web has the gradebook capabilities that elementary teachers have begun to utilize at an exploration level. The desire is to offer some formal training to teachers to make a more seamless system for our grading for our elementary teachers. This is a product that the district currently owns, and teachers currently possess access. The rubric scoring for the elementary teachers will be consistent with the standards-based report card. So, while some grading functions in software converts it from a hundred-point scale, we will keep this through a four-point rubric grading system that is consistent with our report cards. So, our budget implication is that this professional development is one thousand eight hundred dollars to be funded from our supplemental and concentration grant monies that is congruent with the funding of our Common Day of Learning.
Any questions? Entertained a motion? Oh, question?
I have some questions. I understand you might not have the answers tonight for these questions, and if not, maybe you can provide them in an update or anything like that. But I do have a couple of questions. So, the, so we, we already use Ares. Ares stores all of our student information. Is that correct?
Correct.
And is that currently, does Ares store all of our student information TK through twelve or just six through twelve?
Student information TK through twelve. I'm going to defer to Mr. Provokin to answer some of these technical questions because he's, has a much bigger grasp of Ares platform comprehensively than I do.
Okay. And again, if you don't have the answers tonight, I...
Okay.
So, previously, Ares has you, we have used Ares for grading from six to twelve, correct?
Correct. Where you, right now, it's being used from not, yeah, six to twelve currently.
Six to twelve or five, 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 six to twelve, okay. So, we have an interest in expanding it down to K, TK?
Actually, the interest comes from teachers who are already exploring it and are looking at it because they have access to it, but we've never provided adequate training at the elementary level. And so, we thought by including it in our Professional Development Day next Friday, teachers might opt into that module.
Okay. So, you, so you've had some input, input from teachers that have said, "Hey, we'd like to, at the elementary level, we'd like to..."
We have had teachers input grades and explore this, uh, uh...
Aspect.
Aspect of Ares. And rather than asking them to hunt and peck through the process, we thought we'd provide them with the actual training that they need to, to use it. Whether they choose to do so or not is, is a whole different story.
So, because we have Ares and we use Ares, it can be used currently at the elementary level, but we haven't given any training? Is that...
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right. So, this eighteen hundred dollars goes for the training at a PD that we are already having next Friday, for teachers to learn how to use it, and then, and then is it an option for them? It's optional. And I know that in elementary school, it's one through five, and, uh, one through four? TK?
Oh, the grading.
The grading scale is one through four, correct?
I believe it is.
And there's also a satisfactory...
Yes.
Excellent, satisfactory.
And so, it's my understanding, it'll take the rubric grades directly from the gradebook and place them on the report card, eliminating the teachers spending hours manually doing that for every single report card that they fill out.
Okay. So, it will reduce the time. It's something that we already own.
Correct.
We'll, we're just expanding if we're offering and a, a, a different way to deal with that.
Right.
Okay. Thank you for answering all of those questions.
Any other questions? Entertained a motion? So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion. May we please have a vote?
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board Member Gilliland?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board President Hammond?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Up next, a resolution proclaiming March the second through sixth as National School Breakfast Week. Dr. Therosian.
President Hammond, members of the board, I send you greetings from Connie Wu, who is taking care of district business currently up north, I believe. She is, but our school breakfast program contributes to the health of our students, and we would like to propose this resolution to proclaim next week as National School Breakfast Week. Eating a nutritious breakfast allows students to focus on their work and their studies and takes just, oh, awareness into the nutrition that they are receiving through our wonderful food service department. And really, the over two hundred thousand breakfasts served last year is a tribute to the hard work and commitment of the food service workers within our district. And so, the resolution is to proclaim the week of March two through six as National School Breakfast Week.
Any questions? Entertained a motion?
I have another question, but I, I would like to make a comment here because our food services people do such a great job.
Ed, your, your mic.
Our food services people do such a great job here in this district, and breakfast is such an important meal for our students to start the day right. When I was in school, we got a cheese and white bread.
and place them on the report card, eliminating the teachers spending hours manually doing that for every single report card that they fill out.
Okay, so it will reduce the time, it's something that we already own.
Correct.
We're just expanding if we're offering a different way to deal with that?
Right.
Okay, thank you for answering all of those questions.
Any other questions? Entertained a motion? So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion. May we please have a vote?
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board Member Gilliland?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board President Hammond?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Up next, a resolution proclaiming March the second through sixth as National School Breakfast Week. Dr. Terosian.
President Hammond, members of the board, I send you greetings from Connie Wu, who is taking care of district business currently up north, I believe. She is, but our school breakfast program contributes to the health of our students, and we would like to propose this resolution to proclaim next week as National School Breakfast Week. Eating a nutritious breakfast allows students to focus on their work and their studies and takes just awareness into the nutrition that they are receiving through our wonderful food service department, and really, the over two-hundred thousand breakfasts served last year is a tribute to the hard work and commitment of the food service workers within our district. And so, the resolution is to proclaim the week of March two through six as National School Breakfast Week.
Any questions? Entertained a motion?
I have another question, but I would like to make a comment here because our food services people do such a great job.
Ed, your, your mic.
Our food services people do such a great job here in this district, and breakfast is such an important meal for our students to start the day right. When I was in school, we got a cheese and white bread sandwich every other day and a peanut butter and white bread sandwich on the opposite day. And certainly, what we're serving these kids here, there is absolutely no comparison, but they get a great meal, and it's such a, you know, it's so important that we recognize the job that they're doing, and I'm so glad we can name this the...
I was gonna say, you got bread?
Yeah, we got bread, we got more than bread and water, though. We did get some cheese and peanut butter, yeah. I didn't make it to just the bread and water one. Anyway, they do a great job, and we want to thank them very much.
Agreed, agreed. Comment?
Yeah, I wanted to comment and I didn't, my, my little cousin, well, he's not little anymore, but my, my younger cousin is, is going for his master's degree, master's in economics, and something that he shared with me recently, and I'm probably going to butcher it, and I'm sorry, Michael, but he was telling me that he was learning how important nutrition is for a successful society because nutrition helps the development of the brain and the body so that, so that people can learn. And I think it's, I know Connie, you know, works really hard at, at recognizing this, and we all appreciate the Food Services Department so much for what they do, but it really is important for our children to continue their education, and what we're doing right now is, is to make sure that, that they, they get the best education they can, and with this wonderful service that we provide in the morning, that is really the foundation. So, I, I very much appreciate the work that we're doing here with that.
Any other questions, comments? Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion. May we please have a vote?
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Gilliland?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board President Hammond?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Up next is a joint resolution to City of Monrovia and the Monrovia Unified School District. Dr. Terosian.
Thank you, President Hammond, members of the board. During our joint meeting with the city council on January thirteenth, it was proposed and approved that a joint resolution between our two governing bodies be penned to restrict the marketing and sales of tobacco products, flavored tobacco and vaping products in the city of Monrovia in support of the health of our children. This resolution would affirm our commitment, and it is reflective and parallels the resolution penned and approved by the Monrovia City Council during their meeting on February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty.
One second, there's a reason for my madness. It's not always apparent. Okay, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to have Ms. Travanti please read that. That is the joint resolution between the city, yeah, where it's on the recitals, and your microphone, yeah, go for it. This is really important.
Whereas, the City of Monrovia and the Monrovia Unified School District are committed to providing a healthy environment for all students and staff to ensure that the physical, behavioral, social, emotional, and mental health needs of students are met, and whereas the city council, board of education, staff, district educators, and health professionals recognize the importance of tobacco use prevention education in order to reduce tobacco-related illnesses, and understand the best way to prevent tobacco-related illnesses is to keep youth from starting to smoke or use tobacco, tobacco products, and whereas, the city and district work with Los Angeles County Office of Education, Los Angeles County Department of Public Health, and other partnering public agencies to promote good health by discouraging tobacco use through the participation of district students in local tobacco use prevention education, or 2P, efforts. Whereas, marketing by the tobacco industry has now targeted young people with packaging and names that appeal to youth as well as tobacco products that mask the harsh taste and odor of tobacco with flavors highly appealing to youth, example, bubble gum, cotton candy, grape, gummy bear, chocolate chip cookie, and whereas, according to the U.S. Surgeon General, e-cigarettes and other electronic nicotine devices, Ns, contains nicotine, which is a highly addictive drug that has immediate biochemical effects on the brain and the body, alters adolescent brain development, and is toxic in high doses. And whereas, e-cigarettes and other Ns were found to be harmful to youth and other individuals by the United States Court of Appeals and organizations, including the American Academy of Pediatrics, American Lung Association, and American Heart Association, support the regulation of e-cigarettes and other Ns, and whereas, the city and district recognize that ensuring the health of children is a community-wide commitment. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Monrovia does hereby find, resolve, and orders as follows, that the city council of the city of Monrovia and the governing board of the Monrovia Unified School District will take all practical and necessary steps to discourage students and youths, and youths in community from smoking, including forbidding the use of tobacco products and vaping devices on campuses and during any school-related activities, and by providing student education and family information on the dangers of tobacco and vaping use. That the city and the district call on our entire community and elected leaders and legislative representatives to join in support of ensuring student health by restricting the marketing and sales of tobacco, flavored tobacco, and vaping products to young people throughout the city of Monrovia and the neighboring cities served by the district. Passed, approved, and adopted this eighteenth day of February two thousand and twenty.
And that was by the city council, and before us tonight is the board adoption of that. Are there any other questions?
Just one comment, I just want to say how much we appreciate Mayor Adams and the city council for partnering with us on this very important topic, and, and as you mentioned, President Hammond, the upcoming evening for parent education is, is, is something that we need to make sure gets out to this community, and I so appreciate this cord, this cooperation and partnership we have with the city, so thanks to them.
Entertained a motion? So moved.
Second.
Let Maritzus move, yeah.
You want to move it?
So moved.
I'll second it then.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? May we please have a vote?
Board Member Gilliland?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board President Hammond?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Up next, we have a resolution authorizing formation of Facilities Advisory Committee. Dr. Terosian.
Thank you, President Hammond, members of the board. We have spent some time in this district updating our facilities master plan, conducting a needs assessment, and prioritizing the millions and millions of dollars of needs within this district. The board is requested to authorize a formation of Facilities Advisory Committee for the district to provide input related to our current conditions, needs, priorities, and the potential for a school facilities bond campaign. The accompanying resolution has some language, proposed language, about what such a committee would entail, the composition of it, and some of its requirements.
Any questions?
Who would comprise this committee?
Who would, who would be on it? You, I, you don't answer, Kathy, you want me to answer? The committee would make, be made up of teachers, parents, and the five of us would each put two people from the community on that committee, and they'll be advisory to us, it will also be two board members on there. Two board members that would sit would probably be sent from this board to, as a selection, and each board member would put two people from the community on that, to look at it and treat it as an advisory board to this so that we would be able to prioritize what our needs are. They, they don't select what we're going to do, they would advise after having a lot of input, what they think that the needs are going to be from the district and what we should address.
So, how do we choose the, so we would select the community members, would we, the board, also be selecting the, the teachers?
My, my guess would be that the folks on the teacher's side would select from their ranks to have the person that's there. It will be offered to them, it will probably go through to the leadership of the, of the different bargaining groups to suggest and have their person there.
I would think, though, Rob, that since it is a board's committee, that we would approve those, but...
I would think that it would come down, right.
Be like, personal commission or any other one.
This is to put it together.
Recommendation, and then...
Right, this will be to put it together, then it'll come back to us for approval, and then it'll start.
Now, when I served on school site council at one of our elementary schools, we, we looked at our facility, is that, is that not happening anymore, or are we looking at something bigger scale, and we're trying to incorporate more, more people to get more of a voice, to give us more input, and, and burden our, our facility staff?
That is exactly correct. We spent, well, we worked a number of years to get a comprehensive assessment of what our needs were. We finally got to Facilities Master Plan, which is a large, very large document, and if, if you remember, when it went through, it was about three-hundred million dollars worth of needs. We don't have three-hundred million dollars, and I think it would be short-sighted for us to go, well, I think we need this, I think it's best, and this is myself speaking, that we have people from our community who, not only the owners of the facilities, but the users of the facilities, tell us what it is that they think is a priority, because there's going to be limited amounts of money. If you remember, we're looking at the money that we have for facilities maintenance, and it's, it's hundreds of thousands versus hundreds of millions that we need, so there has to be a priority put onto this. And this is one thing that we, as a board, have been talking about for a very long time, is how do we prioritize what our need is? We're, instead of, we're not proactive on it at all, we're reactive because we're constantly sticking our finger in the hole in the leaky dike, and so trying to get upon board of this, and as Dr. Terosian said, this is probably a precursor to going to the community for a bond once we establish what the priorities are and what those needs look like. This is a very big deal, so the people that we're going to be asking to put on that are going to be very, working very seriously trying to figure out what it is those priorities are and where we can put our limited amount of money, because even if you go to the bond, you're not going to get a three-hundred million dollar bond. I don't think we've passed an aggregate of three-hundred million dollars in this community in the last seventy-five years, so that's an impossible task. So, you're trying to take it, make it something more palatable, and find out what our absolute needs are that we must address before those items start costing us even more money. It's something that we need to find out.
And I think this is a good opportunity for people to understand what we can do, because there's statutory limitations on what school districts can do based on their existing debt and versus what the existing population is and so forth. So, it's important to be able to structure things, because as we did this in the past, there's many ways you can structure a bond, many different ways. So, if we can get some of the heavy lifting out of the way at the beginning to make sure everybody is understanding exactly what is entailed, I think it's a lot easier to digest to say whether this is something that we, as a community, want to move forward with or not. But I think, I think, like most things, the more information you have and better educated people are, the easier it is to make a decision, not to go one way or the other, but to make a decision. And any person who's spent time on campus can point to a multitude of things that are off, and so this is an opportunity to prioritize, this is the opportunity to distinguish between a facilities bond and a parcel tax, in, in which some, some funding sources have to go to facilities, other can be used for general operations, and there's a lot of differences. And I want to make sure that when we go through this process, that there's a clear understanding of what's going to happen and why we chose to present what we presented. Bond issues in general are, can be complex, and so it will, it will help to get as many people educated as possible and get everybody on the same page and rowing in the same direction. I think everybody would agree, there's work to be done, and based on our limited funds that we get, just going check by check isn't going to be able to do the ticket, and that we may need to go out and, and remodel our house, so to speak.
And there, you know, we worked so long and so hard to try to get a Facilities Master Plan, and we have one now, it's updated. If we don't go ahead and move forward now in an organized manner and, and spend our money in, in a logical order based on that assessment, we, that will become outdated and the needs will, will just continue to grow. So, I think it's real important that we have this kind of a, a look at that assessment and come up with the best plan that we can.
You know, I think transparency and communication are extremely important, so I know that this committee will be communicating with us, and we have an arena here for the community to, to come and listen to this, and on KGM also. How do we, how do we further spread the word, or is this, is this how we do it, and if this committee, can John cue public if they are not on the committee? Can they attend committee meetings and can they have a dialogue?
It is a public meeting.
Okay.
In, in the past, you know, that's part of the purpose of the committee, is determining the best way to move forward and spread the word and to...
The more people in the chair, the better off, the better off the soup is going to be.
So they can help, raise awareness for us.
Yes, I mean, everything, it's not just awareness, but to help go through the process. This is, you know, one of the problems that we can have is you get stuck in the forest and, and don't see the trees. I mean, we see it every single day. When you have fresh eyes look at problems and issues, it helps, puts things in perspective. I mean, it's been a while since my kid has been in first grade, so my eye for an elementary school might be slightly different than if you have to go there every single day. And so, it helps to have the feedback of different parties that have a vested interest, and even if, and it's just not kids, families who are going to school, it's, I mean, it's the community homeowners, because there is no bigger asset to a community than it's schools, none. What's the first thing new family members look at when they're buying a house? How's your school district?
Right.
It's the first question that's asked, and it's, it's an important thing to all of us in the community, whether you have kids currently in the schools or not, we want to do it right. If we go forward, we want to make sure that the money is spent in the best way possible, and we want to be accountable.
I, I think that we will use any and all means that we can for outreach, up to and including robo-calls, and I think meetings are going to, every tool that we have at our disposal, we will make sure that the community knows, because we actually need the community to know exactly what it is that we're, we're talking about. This is, it's, it's potentially a lot of money, and it will impact everybody in this community, so we need the community at the table to have input on how it goes. But the, the key is to put this committee together first, these will be the folks that are going to be making recommendations, but we have to create it first, and that's why it's on the agenda, so we can create it. Good. Any other questions or comments?
Just one really quick comment. For the people who are, who are wondering if we're moving forward with the bond, the answer is, this is why we're doing a committee. This isn't a given that this is where we're going to go forward, we need all of the information so we can make a determination, what is the best way to go forward and take care of all of the issues that we have in front of us.
Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Any more comments? May we please have a vote?
Fora Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Fora Member Travanti?
Yes.
Fora Member Wong?
Yes.
Fora Member Gilliland?
Yes.
Fora President Hammond?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Up next, we have an MOU between the City of Monrovia and, I'm City of Monrovia, the Monrovia Police Department and the Monrovia Unified School District for an application of the Bureau of Justice Administration BJA grant. Dr. Terosian.
President Hammond, members of the board, for the last couple months, we've been providing updates about the safety grant. It's a violence prevention grant that is offered through the Bureau of Justice and has come to our attention through David Church and Associates, our lobbying firm. It is a $750,000 grant over three years without any matching funds required. And the MOU reflects the requirements and responsibilities of both the Monrovia Police Department as well as the Monrovia District in terms of creating teams and plans to further refine our, the safety plans we already have in place. This helps with additional technology and additional opportunities for communication in terms of reporting systems for school violence.
The reason why we're needing an MOU this evening is because in the grant, and the grant is due on March the 3rd, I mean, the application is due on March the 3rd, is that specific inside the grant, there has to be demonstrated relationship between the policing authority and, in this case, the school district, that there, if we were, are successful in receiving this money, that it can be actually used in the manner of which the grant was intended to be used. And that's the reason why we're needing an MOU with the police department.
Are there any questions? Entertained a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? May we please have a vote?
Fora Member Travanti?
Yes.
Fora Member Wong?
Yes.
Fora Member Gilliland?
Yes.
Fora Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Fora President Hammond?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Up next, we have the pending board issues. Dr. Terosian, do we have anything pressing or change that we're not familiar with?
We do not. Oh, we do have some confirmed board walks that have been included. There's no one more delighted than Ms. Huff in saying that we have confirmed our board walks and those are included in the packet. I'd also like to thank Dr. Kaiser and Mr. Glass for holding, was it 37, community meetings about the LCAP to try and provide information out, receive some feedback before we go and continue the process of assessing effectiveness so that all of that input is provided well in advance through, and going out to schools and to also meet with student groups. So the last of those community meetings occurred yesterday, last night, and there are some student groups with whom Drs. Kaiser and Mr. Glass will be speaking. So thank you for taking our business out and spreading that word.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have one item, which I'm not sure if this is the right place for it or not the right place for it, but I'm going to throw it out here because it's an issue for the board. I keep getting questions from the public about which, which one of our playgrounds is open to who and which gate's open, and I just wonder if we couldn't, couldn't get a list together of when our facilities are open to the public and where they might get into those facilities for the ones that are.
I think this is a continuation of the old program that we had with the city to make our grounds, parks on the weekends combined with the high school, which is open sometimes and not open sometimes. And there is absolutely confusion from people to know whether they could or should not be on the grounds and with the elementary schools with their pets.
And can they get in the back gate or do they have to go around to the entrance on Mayflower? That kind of information is just probably one of the most common questions I get.
And I will agendize that for the March 11th meeting so that the board can come to consensus about that or provide me with directions so that I can identify it. Those MOUs that we had in place with the city have long since expired, and we've not necessarily discussed them since that, those days. And this is a very timely opportunity to do so.
Well, I'm hoping that if we're going to agendize it for the 11th, that you've got all the information from all the different sites as to what they're doing about those sites. So seems like you've got a lot on your plate to put all that on there, but hey, if you can make it by then, great.
I'll try.
Moving on to old business, on Wednesday, March 11th, and on Wednesday, March 25th, we'll have a board meeting here in these chambers. New business, we have boardwalk scheduled for this Friday at Plymouth Elementary. Open houses will be at Clifton on March 18th, Monroe on March 19th, Mayflower on March 24th, and CELC on March 26th. Other dates that are important, the TKK Preview Night is Thursday, February 27th. Rita Cross Monrovia is Thursday, March 5th. There is a pupil-free day on both Friday, March 6th, and on March 20th. Caesar Chavez Day, all school sites will be closed on Friday, March 27th. And spring break is all sites are closed from March 30th to April 3rd. This evening, we will be closing in memory of Suzanne Michelle Skolken, sister of MUSD Admin Secretary Jill Plaza. Suzanne passed away on February 17th and is survived by her mother, father, sister, and two brothers. Our thoughts and prayers are with her and her family at this time. There is no further business before this body. We will stand adjourned at 8:20.